Yeah.
I give her man there. Okay. So I'm gonna please.
Yeah, I was I was saying.
Oh, okay. What you did in the bottom moment, I had to go back and check. Right with all of them.
Two minutes.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, okay. Pretty good idea.
Otherwise.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. All right, if anyone here at the moment can speak, my public comments, you need to fill out one of these form right here. And right here, and you can only speak on agenda, on the agenda on the work topic. But you know, if you would, well, five minutes, be sure to silence your phones. Hope you don't put any of that. Very nice.
It's kind of like a love of love. That's what I know.
Probably. When that show.
Yeah, I think. That that twice.
Yeah. I didn't hear how been so hot. And so we'll be now just a little bit. About now, probably do the rest. It all worked. I've got a lot of. No, it happens. You say. And I told him he had to go. I didn't blame you. She told her about some of our call. But she never. If made it, but you're. She might not. But next to you. Sorry, you're right. Be working in the chain. I think you're. So.
I know. Like a reasonable. But sir, that's never has been paid mostly. And we got. She.
She's right there, girl. She's literally. Sure. Yeah. It's going. Oh, well, it's all. It's the best success. I'm just. He said. I. I. There, how you know? Oh, no. What are you saying? You're sorry? Oh, yeah. I didn't see it. Uh. Always. I was wondering, we have that. What looks good. If they're. You know, probably participate as well. I think that's. So that one is.
Yes.
Yeah. Sorry. Any woman. You've been from speaking at all. And well, it's. Heard it written. Uh.
Thank you.
Yes.
I will talk about something else.
Never know. It's good to do that.
So probably hearing is just that it's time for the public to try. So so you don't have to start in.
Sorry, I didn't need your sign.
So no, that's okay. They probably rang you, so we want to talk real way to.
Follow up.
Yeah, so Ernie, you know, you don't want to cheat.
Uh, for the public hearing. Well, I don't know.
Right. It is. Any agenda item other than a public hearing, a public hearing is for the public.
It's like.
Yeah. Excellent.
They're called.
Yeah. Play over and so. You know. They're seeing.
I'm sorry.
Also, we'll get started. Um, now we've got a few faces in here. If I could remind everybody, if you've got cell phones, please make sure to get off. And gentlemen, please. Thank you.
Okay. Next. Is Keith come here? Who? Easy.
He's here.
Okay. Oh, my sure. Revised. Supposed to last night. Didn't talk this one out, man. Two are waiting on. I need someone to stand chairs. We got. Yeah. We've been. Again. May. Yeah, one minute. Yeah. All right, uh, would you please rise? I've asked David McLaughlin from the Chatham Memorial Methodist Church of Edgewood, Texas to open us in our indication.
Thank you, Judge, commissioners, for allowing me to be here and for the community as well. Let us pray. Lord, we just thank you for this day and this opportunity to do your work. It says on the wall in large letters that it is Newry Trust. We thank you for our elected leaders. May all those who have words today, may those words honor you, that the decisions made today align with your will and purpose for our lives. And may the resources of this county be used for the good of those who love and call this county their home. Lord, we just ask that in everything that we do today, we honor you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Pledge to the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which is theirs. One nation under God, indivisible, infinite, that is for all. And to the Texas flag. On the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas. One state under God, one indivisible. Thank you. You may be seated. Nice. Call our meeting to order at nine oh one. And, um, first item, we do have a forum. Uh, everyone is here. All the commissioners and myself are here. Are there any general announcements? General announcements? None? All right, we will move on to public comments. We have one person who has signed up for, uh, public comment. That is Ann Nelson to speak on item number thirteen. Ann?
Morning, commissioners. Good morning, Judge.
Morning.
I'm Ann Nelson. I'm vice chair with the Van Zandt County Democrats. I live in precinct two. And I'm here to talk about agenda item thirteen regarding the contract with the Animal Protection League. So along with education for responsible pet ownership, we support, we support spay and neuter programs. We also support adopting from responsible and ethical animal rescue groups. And we believe in a coalition of city, county, nonprofits, and the private sector to research and find solutions to local problems. Because of this, we support agenda item thirteen. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. All right. Any, uh, that's all the public comments that I have so far. Uh, we will now move to item number four is consent agenda. The consent agenda, our items considered routine by the commissioner's court will be enacted when one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless the county judge or commissioner request an item be removed from the content agenda and considered separately. Are there any items that need to be removed and discussed? If not, uh, is our motion to accept the consent agenda?
Motion.
Okay. Uh, I'm gonna show Brandon and Virgil. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose like sign. Motion passes. Item number five, we will now go into a, we will close our regular, uh, meeting and go into a public hearing to discuss considering closing, vacating, or dedicating portions of a road to the public. The road or portions thereof to be closed, vacated, or dedicated are described as County Road fifteen oh two from its intersection with Wyoming Street in the city of Van, south to its intersection with County Road fifteen twenty seven, also known as Florida Street. So do we have any, anybody that wishes to talk? Ernie?
Yeah.
All right, just step up to the podium and.
All right. I appreciate you guys. Uh, let me come to speak. Uh, I've been talking to Chad and Brad a little bit about the roads. Now, uh, the road, I'm, I'm, so you know, I'm here to speak as a citizen. I'm not here to speak at councilman.
Okay.
At the city event. But I'm here to speak as a citizen, uh, for this road. If we close that road, that is a road that that goes. And when you go down that road and you turn left, you're going to our park. When we're having events, we have a lot of different events. That's a way to our park. And you start closing off the road. I mean, if everybody, somebody wants to get road and I, and believe me, I, I feel bad for the guy that lives on the road. I feel bad for him because that road has been, it's been bad for a long time. And hasn't been repaired. I mean, not a year or two, not since this, but it's been bad for ever since I've known. Maybe twenty or thirty years. I don't even know. But we can't, I mean, I guess you can close the road. I understand you can do that. But if you guys close that road, you gotta remember the repercussions of what's happening to the city of Van. And I'm not sure if some of you have even been down there to see what that road, where that road enters and, you know, you enter down that road, turn left and go to the park. Do you guys know, realize that? You're closing and opening it to our park. So, and I know we have a water line in there, which I'm sure we're gonna get a, an easement on that, or at least I would hope you would put that in there before you even make that vote. But I, I just think that it's gonna be a bad vote if you vote against this and I, I don't, I don't, I don't agree with it. But I think that we got, you gotta, he, he's told me that he's not sure whether he's for or against. And I told him, well, you know, you gotta make a decision whether you're for or against and have a backbone. If you're against it, you gotta say I'm against it. If you're for it, then you gotta say you're for it. I mean, if you're gonna are we gonna close the road every time somebody wants a road closed because the county didn't do their due diligence? And then he's also said, give it to the city of Van. Well, it ain't even, there's no standard to that road right now. That road is terrible. Why would the city of Van take that road and repair that for you guys? So I'm asking you to say no to that.
Okay. Is there any other? Yes, sir. Your name?
Uh, Charles Ryan.
Okay.
Um, I'm gonna be a little bit easier. I know a part of some of you part think I'm gonna be a little rougher. Um, you know, I sit here, first of all, I'd like to say that y'all are always in a tough position. Obviously, I'm speaking as a citizen, not as a city councilman, but we're city of Van. Uh, y'all are always in a tough position and I feel for you because we have to. But I have a few questions, not really questions, just statements that I would like to make. This has been an ongoing thing for quite a few years, and I think some of you probably getting a take in it when it all first originally started, I'm assuming. Um, since then, we, we sort of kind of grown in the community, in the county as well. But we have equipment now that does road counts, you know, and y'all, y'all familiar with stuff. But I would encourage, if not y'all have the information, to, to look at the road count of the traffic going down a road that we're talking about, this road. Uh, not only is it people that live in the city that live down that road, there's also people that live in the county all around those roads that use that road. Now, yes, it's very bad. I have a Jeep Gladiator and it's, it can take a fine. But it is wrong. Um, what I would say is, is every one of us in this room here, no matter who it is, y'all up there, us sitting back here. In the last eight years of this country, we've all at one point in time said it thought for ourselves, if we could be standing in front of one of these politicians, I'm not calling them politicians. If you stand in some, in front of someone that's important, someone's running for president, for governor, and all that kind of stuff. Oh, I know I would stand up and I would fight for this, I'd fight for that. But when something like this really happens and it's time for people to stand up, they don't want to stand up because they don't, they don't have the courage. And you don't, we can't kick them one or down like that, but they reach out to people like me, to people like, to people throughout the community that might not feel that they can reach out to someone like y'all. Uh, so I'm not telling you either one way or another. All I'm saying is the citizens and the people surrounding that area deserve that. I feel for the landowners. Believe me, at some point in time, sure, I've heard through the city council meetings that I've been a part of, I sort of kind of bat for him too, because it's not, it's not right. But at the end of the day, we should not just kick the road, kick the can down the road for someone else to fix later on. It's a county road. We should do, we should do the, the residents of that community, of the area, the landowner, the chair, battling all this stuff. We should fix it. That's what we should do. We should be passing, we shouldn't give it away. I was driving over here and I thought, you know what, if this all goes down, I could go over to the wheels corner and I could find a worse road in the area and I could sit here and start battling y'all and I could make y'all give me the road. And next thing you know, I'm in business of getting property. That's such a bad presence throughout the, throughout the county. And, and that wouldn't be good. And that's never good at dinner election time. We all know that. So I just hope that y'all done a road count of the traffic coming down that area and really went down every single avenue. It would benefit everybody and not just a select, uh, a select few people. Appreciate your time and, and, uh, hoping to grow up.
Thank you. Charles. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
John, the head of the city, I'm here for the city, man.
You, sir, I'm here.
The shape, the capital, the city. I'm here to speak on behalf of the state of Van concerning road fifteen oh two. Um, I proudly knew the community, so I don't have any of the, the background that goes along with it, but just speaking strictly from a infrastructure standpoint, uh, there's a number of issues with that road that the city abandoned. One is not prepared to take on. It would be an undue burden on our budget as, as well as a few other things that would pop up with that. Uh, closing off that road would also make it difficult to ingress and egress into that neighborhood. Looking at it from a EMS and fire standpoint, that really curtailed being able to get in and out, uh, through that area. So what we're asking is that you consider repairing the road, taking care of the drainage issues that are there, working with the landowners and the, and the citizens in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Who else? Come on in. Do you give us your name?
Well, uh, I'm Chris Gossett. I'm one of the landowners, uh, who just filed this petition, uh, for this particular section of road. Uh, been dealing with this issue for several years now. Uh, my understanding is of a lot of upset people, if you would call from the city. Um, I find it interesting because it's the first time that we're hearing about being upset with this two years of battling this out, and now this has become an issue. Um, and so with this being said, um, I would pose the question to y'all or to them. Uh, if y'all had vehicles traversing through your front yard every day, leaving the road because it's so terrible, would y'all like that? Would you like a continuous trespass? Because we've got several videos. I've got cameras on the city, I have storage facility right there on the corner. And I've got FedEx trucks that come through there, and I've got tenants that reside in apartments that front this road that all they have to do is walk out past their vehicle and not see somebody coming. And somebody's on our property because they're avoiding the road because of the condition that's in. And so the abandonment, the petition that's been, been fronted, um, was not originally my idea. This was the county's idea. This was actually came from the county attorney at that point in time, about two years ago. Um, that went to the wayside, I guess, because of the law firm that the county, that represented the county, I think it was Flowers Davis, no longer represents the county. And so, um, I've been dealing with DA Miss Perry and, uh, to my surprise, I'm sitting at home and on a Monday, I've got maintenance crews getting ready to, I guess, pull concrete out of our facility, uh, to put in a ditch on a road. Uh, this never had a ditch. And you can go back and look on Google Earth and, and whatnot. As Ernie represented, this, this road's been in terrible shape for thirty years. And so there have been drainage studies through KSA, uh, road reports showing the condition of this road since two thousand fifteen. Um, and so it's, it's, it's been a battle that we've been fighting for, for a while now. And so uh, I just want to make sure that everybody's aware that the landowners that front this particular portion of road are for this, uh, abandonment and have signed off on that. So, uh, and other members of that precinct and community surrounding that particular area. Uh, one thing to note, uh, I've heard a lot of ingress issues related to the city park. Uh, probably about two thousand eighteen, the city abandoned the way this property aligns, those two parallel roads that, that front the park. Uh, city event actually closed down this particular road over here on the, on the south side. It was a fifteen oh seven or four, or fifteen twenty seven or Florida street. And, uh, without notifying the landowners, uh, because they could, they own both sides of the road. And so, uh, that was one of their areas, uh, through traffic to be able to get to that park. They still do have gates at those intersections, uh, for that particular road that's just adjacent to this one. And so for us, for us to be blamed for closing a road and, and not having access to a city park, city abandoned this about four years ago. And so I just wanted to provide contact, context to that. The main entry point to that particular, uh, part is through fifteen oh one where the oil museum is. Uh, and so there are access points to then Ohio Street coming from the, the north side. Uh, so there are actually two access points to get into that park. And you consider a third one if they consider the road anymore, but others Iowa Street, but, uh, there's just northern city park as well. So, uh, and then we have fifteen oh two. Fifteen oh two, it's, it's, it's a, it's a mess, uh, jurisdictionally, uh, the way that road is laid out, it's my understanding, and one of the members of the city can correct me if I'm wrong, but uh, there's several, uh, houses in that particular area where they're in county, they pay county taxes, they don't pay city taxes. But then there's several houses, maybe two or three houses that do, are in C limits and do place the taxes. So it's my understanding that those houses that pay city taxes that front that road, it becomes a city road at that point. And so you've got the hopscotch of areas in that particular road of fifteen oh two where it's counting. There's a section about a hundred, two hundred feet to city. And you've got another hundred, two hundred feet is counted, and then turn it back into city. And so, um, like I said, who, at what point, who maintains what at this point? And so, um, this particular section is counted, uh, for both landowners that front the road on that side. And so, uh, our intent would be to, to close it all, gate it off. Uh, as far as utilities, I, I work for the Department of Transportation. If you advise here, speak on roads, it'll probably be me. And so, um, with that being said, I, I purchase right away, I deal with right of ways. I did oil and gas prior to. So as far as easements or whatnot, we would have to grant easements, transportation code requires that. So, uh, as far as water, electric, whatnot. So if we did close it off, then we would have to provide access just because the utilities exist there currently. So, uh, it's my argument to this, if the city of Van truly is upset about this, then it should be dedicated to them to where they take care of it. Uh, this was not an original idea to, to ban this road. Uh, given the second go around, as far as that's concerned, when DA, uh, came out and talked to us on that Monday morning. Banishment was brought up again. We're fine with it. I'm ready to put this to bed. I'll fix the road myself. I'll spend the money, put the gates up. It's gonna cost me a lot of money. But the last thing I want is somebody coming to tell me that they're gonna take my land improperly doing unconstitutional taking and then go through the process, uh, go through the proper process, process condemnation. So, uh, like I said, I don't think any of you would like somebody traversing through your front door uh, because they're trying to avoid a road that's not been fixed in a long time. So, uh, we don't want to get sued. Somebody's hurt on our property because somebody's trying to leave out that road. So, uh, because it's just, we don't want, we don't want that to happen. So, uh, so that's, that's my two cents related to that. So I appreciate you all giving some to see her say on that.
Anybody else?
Can I have one more thing?
Yes, you may.
Oh. The city of Van has never voted on anything pertaining to this road at all. So this is not, this, I mean, the city of Van don't have a dog in the fight. We've been tried to, we've been dragged into the fight. For kind of yard. But we were never in the fight. Um, I believe from just what Mr. Gossett just said, and we're talking about a landowner, the city and the county, and we're talking about who to give the property to. Well, why not we start with who owns? That's where we start. Who owns it now and what's shaping it now? And who decides that, okay, they get it, y'all get decided to kick the road that's destroyed and just give it to somebody and the burden be on me? Now, like I said, the right thing to do would be fix the road. If you intentionally don't get in the way, it's fix the road and then get the road. If that's really what it's about. But we know as a group of men here, it's not about that. It's about the funds and having the funds to fix the road. But I'll say this. Well, setting a bad precedent, guys, every one of you know. We know, I mean, when you're giving things away, ain't nothing like the free. Ain't nothing. I could tell you stories for twenty-five years of my life, it ain't nothing free. And you go and you give a road away for free and then you're basically saying, you know what, I'm not gonna be held accountable for fixing a road or blah, blah, blah. You have a few people in the community that are strong and fit about this road. You just wanna start popping up everywhere. Everybody's gonna start popping up with the same van. We've never been brought in litigation over this road. The city of Van has never been in litigation over this road. As far as I'm concerned, it's the county that's been, not the city. So it doesn't matter to me as a citizen or even as, as a council member. At the end of the day, if the road gets fixed, I don't use the road. Now, for the citizens of the community that uses the road, yeah, that's who I'm fighting for. It doesn't matter to me. What I know is, is if I was in a situation, which I don't know your finances, but if I was up here with y'all, my thought process would be, okay, I'm taking my butt in the vehicle. I'm driving over and I'm gonna try to fix, find a solution to this problem. And it's the last resort is gonna be getting into the way. That's all I, I mean, that, that's privilege for, that's it. We can't just give a road to, to a city that's that's struggling and say, okay, now fix the road. I just, I don't think that's right.
Thank you.
And.
Yes.
Mr. Gossett has been talking about the road, you know, being at this array, and the people are going in his property, and I do believe that's happened. But with that being said, then let's fix the road. People won't be going on his property no more. If that's the problem, the true problem is people going on his property, they're driving off the road and go fix the road. Fix the drainage issue, whatever's gotta be done, just fix it. And then problem solved, and everybody's in. Thank you.
Burns, B U R N.
Mr. Gossett, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
If the road is fixed to where people are not driving off onto your property, would that resolve the problem?
Yes, sir. As long as obviously there's not a taking there, unconstitutional taking. So we've been approached by commissioners or proud to put a ditch along that road. Where no ditch exists on that road from Ohio Street all the way south to F and sixteen. And so it was proposed to us to put a ditch on us. Well, transportation code requires that to be shed into a waterway, can't descend on us. But the ditch is put on us, where's that water going to go if it just terminates at the end of our property? It's either going to back up or it's going to go across the road like it had, has been having the years. I mean, that water sits in the road, it's not shedding. So the proper way to obviously build the roads, crown it and then let the water shed. The problem is, there's not enough space over there. Our private water and sewer lines, we're outside the city limits. But we do have city utilities that we utilize. And so we are on water and sewer. And part of that agreement was back in the eighties, whenever a different public works director was in play. We had my granddad built storage facilities, put his house over there. He's got some rental property over there. And we live over there as well. And to be able to do that, he didn't want to be annexed in the city. And so he approached the city, asked how many times the city utilities and they said, yes, as long as you run the private water and sewer lines. And so we have private water and sewer lines that run through there, especially in the area where you would quote unquote put a ditch. And in fact, it runs probably about three hundred feet across of the road. So we have a two inch water line, then we have a sewer line that runs through there and ties in along Florida Street. And so to be able to put a ditch in, we've got water meters there. You've got an encore power pole that's four foot away from the road. You've got a barn that's eight feet away from the road. And so there's a lot of obstacles there as far as quote unquote trying to correct that road and possibly put in a ditch. And so there are, I've told Miss Curry, there's transportation code, there's fire misver, putting drainage in on a road. And so we would like for that to be followed through on if that's the case. Ultimately, I really don't want to have to spend the money to close the road. Because this is going to be an undue burden to hear everybody talking about the condition of the road. I'm going to have to come in and fix it on whatever portion is being abandoned. And I'm going to have to put gates in and I'm going to be in thirty, forty thousand dollars. And so I've already been fighting this with attorneys and whatnot. And so in, in short, yes, I mean, if it can be fixed and fixed correctly as opposed to a patch being thrown down and then water comes and we give a two inch rain and floods everything out and it's in worse shape than what it was to start with, when it was patched. So if that can be fixed, we're not opposed to that. So I think that's been part of our argument here is fix the road. I mean, it's just fix the road, do it right, we're willing to work. I'll provide drainage easement, but I hadn't been brought up. But the county doesn't want to buy a drainage easement to be able to do that. And so with that being said, we also don't have a whole lot of room in that particular area where those apartments are, where I got tenants that park. It's where they park. By the time they back out, there it's ten feet to the road, fifteen feet to the road. So you can imagine somebody's vehicle parked right there and it's it's coming off the road and you're sliding by the end of vehicles to be able to get to the other side. So if we can get it fixed, that'd be great. I believe an internal local agreement was agreed upon, probably about two years ago, for the county to be able to do work in city event. So I don't know if city event and the county can utilize resources together to be able to fix that. There was an issue, the same issue. I know Mr. Ryan came up here and spoke that city event has never been a part of anything like this. But Wyoming Street on the north side of our facility is on a corner of Wyoming Street, fifteen oh two. We had the same issue for fifteen, or Wyoming Street. And we brought this before the city attorney two years ago. And city event actually voted to abandon that particular section of road. And then there were conversations had, I guess, between the commissioner or whatnot, because at the same time is when the abandonment was brought up by Flowers Davis. And everybody was deciding to abandon the road. So after it was voted on, we had another city council meeting. And then that road was taken away essentially. And so it was originally voted on to abandon their section of road, which is about two hundred and fifty feet on that north side. So there's been a whole lot of back and forth on this particular thing. It's been a roller coaster for us. We would just like to enjoy our property, make sure it's safe, make sure the people can come in and out. I'm not trying to upset any of the landowners, but I've got enough landowners in that particular area that are upset about this, just like I. And I'm getting the brunt of it. And like I said, I've got, we got cameras, I got videos, I got everything on those facilities to be able to show who comes and goes. And so it's just, I'm tired of, tired of fighting it. So if I can, the county's looking to, to close it down and just their proposal. Not ideal, but I mean, if this puts it to bed, then I'm willing to do it. So that's my two cents. But yes, if we can do it right and fix it, then that would be the best, best alternative, I think, for everybody.
All right. Are there any more comments?
One last thing, and I promise I'll walk out the door and I'll leave.
Thirty seconds.
I disagree with just the public hearing. You can talk.
I don't need that long because I really need to be done. This, we don't need to drag it on. Some of you haven't been here long enough and you just got, it just got twisted on you. Yes, the city was brought to it. We was in a vote. Because we were told false information at one of the golf again. And we voted because we agreed with, I just told you earlier, I fought for it too. But we all voted to abandon the road with false information. Once we got the right information, we all took our vote back. We all stood up and took our vote back and said, we're not a part of this, we're not getting involved with this. So watch how things are twisted. Things are twisted all the time. What I'm saying, if a vote like this is taking place and it's this serious, I think each and every one of you probably should have reached out to people in our community. Me being a city councilman of city event would probably have been a good one to start with. He don't have his council members coming, he's got meetings all the time. So this seems like it's a pretty good, pretty serious vote. My followers, I'm on social media all the time. Anybody can get hold of me. So I think maybe we should have gotten all the information, but the things are being set up here in twists and turns to fit a certain agenda. And it's going to cloud any judgment. So I hope you stand fast and do what I think.
Thank you, Ryan. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak?
Yes, sir. A comment as far as that, we are reaching out, teaching everyone y'all right now in this public hearing. That's why in public hearings here, everybody can come, everybody can talk all they want to. You don't have to sign a list to talk. All we got to do is know who you are. So with this, this, don't thank it, because this is happening. This is your opportunity to come talk to this court.
Thank you. Anybody else? If not, I will close the public hearing at nine twenty seven. And we will go into, back into our regular commission court meeting where we will just go to item number six, which is discuss, consider closing, vacating or dedicating portions of the road to the public, the road or portions of the road to be closed, vacated, dedicated or scribed. It's County Road fifteen oh two from its intersection with Wyoming Street and City of Van South to its intersection with County Road fifteen twenty seven, also known as Florida Street. All right. Open for discussion.
Do you want to explain some of the details? So this is a section of County Road that runs between two city streets. And one of the speakers noted that some of the people who live on one side of the County Road are in fact in the city. That is correct. Some of them aren't. It's kind of a very strange boundary. Mr. Gossett, who spoke, actually owns both sides of the road. Right, you bought the second side.
Have a property facility is on, over the road, across the road, and then our neighbor, she's on the corner on the southeast.
But CAD shows you bought the other side, the property on the other side from your original facility. Is that correct?
Yes, it's a corner of that road.
Okay. So the road actually, the land the road is on actually belongs to one of the property owners, like most county roads. The land that it's on belongs to a property owner. However, the county has surface right for the road on that piece of property. Legally, if you were to abandon this road, Mr. Gossett would have to pay the county for the loss of the surface right. I don't have any idea how to put a nominal value on that. I would do the research to find if we've ever done this before and what that value was. But I don't expect it's significant. But that's to address what Mr. Ryan said, the county wouldn't be giving anything away. The law says that the landowner has to actually pay for that. Even though he owns the land, the county would be giving up its surface right use. So there would be a payment from the landowner to the county. Additionally, if the road is abandoned, it is the landowner's responsibility then to have surveys done, surveys that recognize and have on this survey any utility easement. There is a utility pole here, and it's my understanding that there also is a water main, city of Van water main running underneath what this, where this road is now. So if the county were to abandon the road, Mr. Gossett would have to pay the county for that surface usage. He would have to pay to have a survey done, a survey that recognized all the utility easements. My conversations with him, he's not represented by council, so I've been talking to him directly. My conversations with him have indicated that he is prepared to do that and to negotiate what that reasonable amount would be for the surface right. Commissioner LaPrada has a lot more information on road maintenance than I do, a lot more understanding of road maintenance and what goes into it than I do. I do understand that in order for this road to be a road that won't cause damage to people's cars, a road that people are pleased with traveling down, when it's not a problem for the county, that there has to be some type of drainage put in. That's kind of where this all started. Mr. Gossett put in a concrete driveway that went all the way out to the surface of the road. That changed the water flow. And it's just absolutely necessary, based on what Commissioner LaPrada has told me, for there to be some kind of drainage along the side of that road to keep the water from going to the road and destroying it, causing potholes every time he fixes it. So those are the two options, two primary options are abandoning it, entering into or voting to abandon it contingent upon negotiations with Mr. Gossett, whether we can come to a reasonable agreement. Then, once those contingencies are done, take a final vote to abandon it. Or don't abandon it. Get a plan for a, for drainage there. I believe, based on my conversations with Mr. Gossett, that he will more than likely put us into litigation over that. I don't believe it's an unconstitutional taking. I believe if we can put the drainage there that's necessary for the road, his opinion differs. I understand that. So it's likely we would wind up in litigation over that. There is a third option that would be to let Mr. Gossett put in drainage if that met with our approval. I would, if I were sitting in your shoes, I would want to see that plan and have an engineer opinion or y'all's opinion. You guys are the road experts as to whether or not that would be sufficient to keep the water off the roadway. But those are basically the two primary options that the law allows, the abandonment, the conditions of the abandonment, us to put in drainage ditch, which I do think is allowed by the law. It's been represented to me by Commissioner LaPrada. This is a grade one road. So I do think it's allowed by law for us to put in what we need for drainage. That would probably interfere with the concrete driveway that he has put. But again, I think the law allows us to do that. I know he just moved, so we'd probably wind up in litigation. Third option would be to let him present a plan that takes care of the drainage issue. And I have the road on Google Maps. If anybody wants to see it.
Okay, so on the drainage, that road's been there a long time. And you said Mr. Gossett put in this concrete road, concrete driveway to the road, which impeded the drainage. Correct? Or changed the drainage?
Mr. Gossett built additional storage facilities on the property along what he has. And the natural drain originally went down the middle of the property and threw another lot, the Florida Street and hundred. Well, when he redesigned it, he brought all that water down this concrete drive to the road. Which the road had poor drainage to begin with, and now it's really created a problem catching all the water off that property, often structures coming into the road.
I don't know how the, how the city works, but I know with the county, if somebody comes in there with the driveway, they have to get a covert permit and the commissioners go out there with their foreman and look how the drainage goes and sign it off. Did anybody inspect how Mr. Gossett put the drainage in or he just do it himself?
This was done back during that window before, between the time we created our permit policy and such as that. It was, he started his project before the current Southern Vision policy took effect. So it was grandfathered from me. So there was no requirement for drainage studies or anything like that. And it was prior to us coming up with our covert permit.
So what you're saying, there's no covert in the driveway that he installed?
He built a concrete drive with a dip to carry the drainage and it brings it all and puts it on the road.
But there's no account of, back then, I guess there was no accountability, how you do drainage, just go out there and do it, not now, but then. Just do what we want to do.
There's the driveway and these are the storage facilities and there's the driveway going to the right.
Well, I'll comment, I'll comment and I can't make a decision on this today. I've got with all the stuff that Colin said and the things I've heard here, I've got to do a little more research on it. I said.
I kind of agree in that. I'd like to go out and look at it and see it. And is, is it worth having an engineering firm come out and make recommendations? Or do we already know what needs to be done?
One thing I heard today that I hadn't heard as of yet was that Mr. Gossett was wanting to build some kind of drainage. I haven't heard any designers, seen any design on that to this point. He may have a plan for how he can catch the drainage he brought to the road and change it and bring it away from the road, which would allow us to fix it. The problem is with that much water off that most property coming in the road, we would just about have to build a similar concrete driveway dip to carry it anywhere else. And that would be a very expensive undertaking for the county where there's one spot. As far as the county spending money on engineering, I think you got quite a few things you're going to got to discuss with Mr. Gossett. And some of the options made today before I would spend money on that engineering plan. And ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank all y'all for coming. I've made a few phone calls to people and asked them to call people to have them here so we could hear from all the people. And Mr. Burns is right. I told him, I said, I'm waiting to hear from the people. I'm not going to come in here with a preset mindset of this is what I want to do. That would defeat the purpose of a public hearing. So that's why I appreciate all y'all coming and I've been reserving to hear y'all's input before I make a decision. And we've gained some new ground for that today. There's a couple of members of the court already feel like a little more research could be done, come to a better solution. I'll be glad to make a motion to table until this research can be done.
I'll second that.
All right, motion has been made and seconded. Further discussion? I firmly believe that we can get this resolved without abandoning, but we need to do our research to and work with the landowner, with Mr. Gossett, to find out what he's willing to do and what we need to do. So any further discussion? If not, all's in favor, say aye. Pose like sign. All right. Motion has been tabled to decision on this side right there. So thank you very much for those that you showed up and talked about. We'll get this resolved. Item number seven is to consider the Van Zant County Historical Commission annual report for two thousand twenty three. All right, whose agenda items this?
I put it on the agenda. Was there somebody going to show up for that? Yeah. Yeah, just supposed to be.
All right.
Motion to table?
All right. Uh, motion by Commissioner Pearson and in second, Commissioner Melton, any second, any additional discussion? All's in favor, say aye. Oppose, like sign. Motion has been tabled. Item number eight, discuss consider appointment of new board members for the Van Zant County Sarah Norman Library Advisory Board. We go.
Good morning, Commissioners, Judge.
Would you state your name for the record?
Name is William R. Howell, H O W E L L Senior.
Thank you.
I'm president of the Board of the Van Zant County Sarah Norma Advisory Board. I come to you today and requested that we could be put on the agenda per the requirements of the Library Advisory Board Rules and Regulations. As president, I'm required to obtain approval from the Commissioners' Court for any new board members. So I'm requesting today that the following two individuals be approved, be accepted as members of the advisory board. These two requested members are Ms. Courtney Rourke, who is the resident precinct two, here, there. Uh, whose background has she served as a and as president of the Will's Point VTO and is certified event planner and assisted in nonprofit fundraising, stuff like that. She brings a certain amount of expertise to the board that we're looking for. Number two is Mr. Dan Macy. Some of you may be familiar with him from precinct three. Uh, Mr. Macy has well over thirty to fifty years of education experience, is currently serves on a board of the local private school. They just, they opened up recently over off of six to four, am I correct? So if you could give us an approval to accept them on the board. Pardon me for being kind of new at this, this is the first one I've had to come in front of you and speak. Normally, if it's radio or law enforcement or something like that, I can pop it right out. I'm new to the board, so as far as being president. Anyway, I hope that we can get a motion and acceptance to accept these two to the board. And for those of you that haven't been over to the library lately, we've got a lot of new functions going on, which these people here have been helping and volunteering at the library quite a bit of time. And we look forward to even further opportunities for them and their expertise. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion? All right, is there a second? All right, motion made, second, any discussion?
Do you want to repeat their names for minutes?
It's Dan Macy and Courtney Rourke. Is that right, Rourke?
Yeah, R O A R K.
Okay. All right. Any more discussion? All's in favor, say aye. Oppose, like sign. Motion passes. Item number, yes. Thank you for your service. Appreciate it. All right, item number nine, discuss consider approval of a Platte Z-Ray RV Resort on Van Zant County Road Thirty Eight Ten in Will's Point, Texas, located in precinct three.
Motion to table this.
Right. Motion table, I'll give it to Brandon. He was just a hair quicker. Yeah, any further discussion? All's in favor, say aye. Oppose, like sign. Motion has been tabled. Item number ten, discuss consider approving resolution of support for the county motor fuel tax exemptions. And I put this in here, one of my fellow county judges, Travis Ransom in Cass County, has started this, and and I'm going to read you the resolution so you understand the the logic behind it. It says, Texas counties are the, whereas Texas counties are the action arm, the state government are responsible for the operation management of many various state governmental programs as required and authorized by state law. And whereas Texas counties provide essential state services to constituents at the local level, which are fully or partially supported with funds dispersed by the state of Texas pursuant to the state appropriations process. Whereas Texas counties provide emergency management services to the citizens of the state of Texas and serve as first responders during disasters to clear roads, provide life-saving rescue, recovery, support to local, regional, state, and federal agencies. And whereas the rising cost of fuel costs have significant impact on county budget, and whereas the state of Texas has authorized motor fuel tax exemption for volunteer fire departments, which partner with Texas counties to provide life-saving fire response and mitigation to citizens of Texas. And whereas the state of Texas has authorized motor fuel tax exemption to Texas public schools for motor fuel taxes, which helps reduce expenses to local school districts and alleviate the impact of school district property taxes to the citizens of Texas. And whereas exempting Texas motor fuel taxes for Texas counties will reduce tax churn in state and further alleviate the impact of beloved of local county property taxes to the citizens of Texas. Now therefore be it resolved, the Van Zant County Commissioners' Court does hereby resolve that for the foregoing reasons, it is the best interest of Texas counties and their taxpayers to support in favor of passage of this legislation that attempts exempts counties from certain motor fuels taxes. So, and I ran the numbers based just on the road and bridge. If we were exempted from the state tax, it would save us about seventeen thousand dollars a year. And that would also apply to the Sheriff's Department too, in in that regard, so it'd be additional ones. So there are other agencies within the county that are already exempt, and we're just asking that the county be considered in that group of entities that is exempt from motor fuel tax exemption. So that's that's the workup. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, hold on a second. All right, discussion?
Well, you just got to remember the, could be for the possible repercussions, how much the Texas, the state of Texas helped us through the years on things, they probably give us more than seventeen thousand dollars worth of material and stuff back to us. So are you, are you going to, in the long term, are you going to cost us things? So that's something that you might want to take into consideration, but before you do something like this. I mean, you can probably see all of your, your rap disappear and lots of other things that the state of Texas has.
A rap.
Reclaim asphalt and turf.
There you go, okay.
It's what common folks call millings. And I'm common, I call them.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? All's in favor, say aye. All's opposed, like sign? Okay, motion passes. You did go right, Brandon. Yeah, okay. All right. Item number eleven, discuss consider approving a donation of a new wheelchair for the Van Zant County Courthouse. I had a person that had a brand new wheelchair that did not need, and we used to have a wheelchair here in the courthouse, but I believe it got, it was disposed of because it was not safe. And the purpose of the wheelchair is to help to assist people that may collapse or may have some physical ailment while they're in the courthouse, and just to help get them around the courthouse and possibly out of the courthouse, but it's not to give them to use permanently, so. And the person has requested to remain anonymous, that wants to donate that. So is there a motion to accept the new wheelchair? All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion is made, and second, any further discussion?
Yes, I put Tom down on the spot, is that, can we accept anonymous donation?
I I talked with Sandy about it. Sandy looked it up, looked up the code. Yes, we can.
Thank you.
So. Sandy here? Yes, there she is. All right, any more discussion? All's in favor, say aye. Oppose, like sign. Motion passes. Item number twelve, discuss consider approval of county judge signing interlocal cooperation agreement with Hopkins County for housing inmates. This was on our last Commissioner Court meeting, but we didn't get the agreement in. Now we have the agreement in. Is is there a motion to accept? Okay.
I'll just see if you have any questions.
Tell the wheelchair.
Motion made, second, any further discussion? All's in favor, say aye. Oppose, like sign. Sorry, you lost your moment of glory.
That's all right.
We went right by.
We've got inmates up there as we speak.
Yes. Item number thirteen, discuss consider approving a contract between the Van Zant County, uh, Visser County and Animal Protection League. Okay.
Judge, Commissioners, as you know, we have a problem with strays, dogs and cats in Van Zant County. And we did not renew our contract with Cedar Creek Community Society Shelter in the FY twenty-four budget because the shelter went from six hundred and fifty dollars a month with a maximum of ten animals per month to sixty thousand a year. So we have ten thousand dollars left in our animal control budget. And the FY twenty-four budget, I propose that we use this to fund the Animal Protection League of Longview, Texas, beginning this month until the end of our FY twenty-four budget, September the thirtieth of this year, at a thousand dollars a month. This fund would be used to provide free spray and neutering services to the citizens of Van Zant County. The Animal Protection League is a nonprofit organization and has agreed to provide the county with weekly reports showing a number of surgeries and other services provided. The Animal Protection League normally sets up their services twice a month in the parking lot in front of the tractor supply store here in Canton. And I've been working with a committee on this project, including Ms. Phillips, who is the director of the Animal Protection League, League, and Ms. Stoneaker, Ms. Ragel, and Deputy McLeese. So I would like for Ms. Phillips, who's the director of the Animal Protection League, to come over today and tell us about the program.
Good morning. Commissioner, good morning, Judge.
All right.
Um, I'm Sheila Phillips. I am the director of the Animal Protection League. I've been doing this twenty-five years. I got into this, I had my third son, and I I get bored real easy. So having babies wasn't fulfilling my boredom, so I saw an ad in the paper about a lady rescuing dogs. I like, I like animals and something I might want to do with my babies, you know, starting kindergarten. She said, we'll have a meeting in September. I went to the meeting, and here I am. Um, we started out rescuing before we got into the spay neuter, and it was right before Christmas holidays at our local shelter there, one big shelter, maybe, maybe fourteen ones. And I went in there and I emptied the shelters. I was so happy, got them all out, nobody was stopping. Back then, they euthanized instead of paying the ACLs to go up there and take care of the animals over the holidays. So I got the animals out of the truck, and a truck pulled in with a mama dog. And I knew, I said, we cannot rescue our way out of this. There's too many animals, not in the home. We started spaying neutering, started by renting a van, booking the community pets. We're in Self Springs, and we took them to a spaying program in Dallas that's called Love Pet. We did that for a while, and we realized we could do that in Self Springs. In June of nineteen ninety-seven, we ran our first spaying program clinic that that day. We were going to run them every two weeks, do a day of spay neuter every two weeks. We were quickly doing it every week. From there, we got us our first van, it's called the Critter Getter, and we take it out to Canton, one of the locations we came to. Parish was another one, we go out, Longview, and we pick up the animals like we originally did in Self Springs, bring them to our Self Springs clinic, spay neuter them, take them home. And we did that for a while, and a member of one of my board members now, Gail Nash, ran into me at Longview, loading the van, and she always overbooked it. And she ran up to me, she goes, oh, Sheila, the schedule's going to do a spay neuter program. I said, Gaila, if you want to spay neuter program, rent a building, we'll bring it here. We now have three stationary offices. We have three mobile units that go out. And so we are running thirty locations across these states. We did, I actually have some information here, can I pass out to y'all?
Sure.
I'll take one fast. Now, this is a breakfast in Canton tomorrow with our program. Um, we come every other Thursday and one Saturday, and starting in June, we're going to be coming weekly. Um, so that that will help the community a lot better, providing more services. We do about thirty-five animals a trip for our spay neuters, and we do provide low-cost vaccination, flea medicine, heart medicine, warmer, that stuff. We have now, in nineteen ninety-seven, first start, is we did five hundred and twenty-one surgeries that year, and vaccinated four hundred and forty-seven animals against rabies. Last year, twenty twenty-three, we did twenty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine surgeries and vaccinated animals against rabies, thirty-nine thousand three hundred and twenty-six. So we've grown a little bit. And Animal Protection League just, it's kind of like a monster itself and takes off, and I just hold on to the pitches, the need is so great. And when it comes down to it, it's it's talk about shelter and what they cost through the shelter, there are too many animals out there, and it's tax dollars. When you spay a neuter, you don't have all those puppies that ultimately end up in the shelter, and unfortunately, ultimately end up being euthanized, and all that costs money. Um, we offer, I have a class list in there, but we also offer senior discounts, military discounts, and we offer discounts to five oh one C three rest groups. And we do work with voucher entities, make this kind of what you're proposing, giving a thousand a month. We've done it several ways. We could do a voucher system that we submit back to you for payment, or we've had them give the money, we put in a fund, eat out of it. And we do reports across either way we do that, we send to you. That's kind of who we are and what we do. You have any questions?
Is tractor supply the only location in Van Zant County or Canton?
Yes, I think that's the only location in Van Zant County that we go to.
Okay. And approximately, how many animals are you servicing during the, once a month, right?
It's every, right now, it's every other Thursday and one Saturday. For June, it'll be every Thursday and one Saturday. We will book up to thirty-five surgeries, and as far as the vaccination clinic gets a walk-in, we do fifty to a hundred easy.
Okay.
Thirty-five surgeries, something per day?
Per day, per location. I run three to four locations a day. I guess there were thirty tails across East Texas. We're up in Texaco, we're down in Palestine, Canton, Wausau, Parish, I mean, we're down everywhere.
And Van Zant County, how many do you normally do in a month in Van Zant County?
Thirty-five times three right now, so that's going to be about a hundred and fifteen, hundred and five. Hit me back on the spot.
All right, any more questions?
Well, I do think the court needs to decide that we're going to do the voucher system where they submit to us and we pay the reporting system as the animal that you spay and do.
Yeah, the voucher system is where we collect the funds after the services, or the other system is where the funds are given, and then the services, then we eat out of that fund. Either way, we report the numbers to you, and I can work either way.
I protect it, not the voucher, that way we we're, the way I understand, we're thinking a thousand dollars, one thousand dollars a month towards spay and neuter services, plus any related services. This has other services, but it would only be other services that's related.
To perform the surgery, like a pregnancy or a heat charge or a crit charge, would be something that to accommodate that surgery, that has to be added to it, so it would cover that.
I personally, the, Commissioner Melton, like the voucher deal, that way we'll cover it, and for some reason, they can't be here one month, or they run short one month, I don't think you will. We would be protecting the citizens' thousand dollars. But.
Yeah, I mean, I like the voucher system.
Are there any other options in the contract that we need to decide before?
You all have the contract before you, I mean, if you have any recommendations.
That's the only thing I'd want to put is other services that relate to spay neuter services.
And then also take into consideration, are you going to offer it to your Van Zant County community at large, or are you going to make it income base? Because I have a lot of programs I work with that we give it to them if they're on any kind of government program, disability, Medicare, Medicaid, stuff like that, they're giving the funds versus just everybody at large, so that's something. So that's something you'll set the parameters of what we need to do in that area.
So this is just gonna go towards the spay and neuter, like we're looking on here, nail trim. They want to come in for.
That's on the, that's on the plan. Yeah, they want to get a heart test, they want to get flea medicine, that's on the plan.
Spay and neuter surgeries plus other services that pertain to.
To complete the surgery. And examples of that is, uh, advanced pregnancy would be twenty-five dollars and heat charge is fifteen. If it's a crypt, meaning a male dog, um, has one testicle send it, that's twenty-five dollars for that. Or in another scenario, they can find what's called a pyrometra, it's a infection of the uterus. We don't charge for that and that's like a thousand dollar surgery, but we make them take home antibiotics which runs fifteen, twenty-five dollars. So those, those extra ser- services are not huge.
Right.
But it was, it's needed to complete the surgery.
Is a rabies shot considered part of the process?
Some places do include the rabies shot, I work with, and some places don't. Since Texas is, um, under like quarantine laws, the, the counties can set their policy on whether they demand it. Um, a lot of places will pay for the rabies to do it because we do require anyone having a spay and neuter surgery either show proof of the animal's vaccinated.
Right.
Or they will get a vaccination at that. It is twelve dollars.
How will we process the vouchers? It's determined the character's opposite.
Uh, I would thank to turn it in just like a, just like a bill to show us.
We would attach a report, a usage report, basically has every client and what the, uh, amount is with the total at the bottom. The vouchers would be attached to that, admit it to whoever patient feels. And then they send us a check.
And how often do we do that?
Um, my girl, they do the reports daily, so you'll probably get them weekly over soon. Cause every trip she does, we do the whole list of reports for that trip. And part of that is she, uh, gets all the vouchers from the different places and sends out for reimbursement.
You will vouch more than a thousand dollars, so just send over what we agree to, right?
We'll have to track it phone room because it's, once people find out, our phone room is gonna blow up. So we're gonna have to do a waiting list because a thousand a month, you see the prices, female dog coming seventy-five dollars. It's gonna be very limited. So it would be a waiting list to get in, this month we'll do this, this month we'll do it all the way to September. So, uh, we'll have to track it very closely.
Okay, any further discussion? Is there a motion to, uh, accept the, approving the contract between VanZant County and Animal Protection League?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make that motion, uh, but do we need to get the amendments? What amendment to the contract that you wanted?
Yes, sir.
What is it?
Voucher system?
Look, to go with the voucher system and, and to correct it's where it says other services. It's just only other services related to spay and neuter surgeons.
Okay, got that.
And, and we'll, and we'll pay through voucher system up to one thousand dollars per month, uh, through the rest of this, uh, this. Which the date is on there, it's, it ends September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, I'll make that motion with the, uh, with the revisions.
Second, oh, Brandon, second.
All right, motion made, second, any further discussion? All's in favor, say aye. Oppose, like sign. Motion passes. Uh, item number fourteen, discuss consider partial payment of milestone B dot one dot four hardware delivery from L Three Harris.
Yes, Jim, I put this on the agenda, this is part of the radio project. And I have our consultant, Mr. Barry Black here to review it with you.
Good morning, Court. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir, we can hear you. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can. So, thank you, um, so yes, this is one of the milestone payments for the radio project. Um, it is a twenty percent of the total contract. But this is one of the milestones that can be prorated. And the reason it's prorated is it's for hardware delivery. And all the hardware has not been delivered to the warehouse in Will's Point. Uh, and that's just, it's not, um, you know, uh, uh, fault of L Three Harris. It's just the way that the project is staged and things like that. Uh, we did a thorough inspection of all the equipment that's been, uh, delivered. And the prorated portion of that equipment is on this invoice and, and only on this invoice. The remaining portion of it will be coming down the road probably in four months or five months or something like that. But the, the total amount on the invoice for five hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifteen cents, all of that equipment has been received. It's in your warehouse, it's been inventoried, it's not damaged. And, um, I, I give my thumbs up on this portion of the invoice, um, being paid by the county.
I'll make a motion to that effect.
All right, motion been made, uh, permission of Brad to approve this milestone payment. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion made, second, further discussion? Any questions from Mr. Black? If not, all's in, in favor, say aye. Oppose, like sign. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
You bet. All right, item fifteen, discuss to approve three three-month lease renewal agreements and payment concerning belly dump trailers from Braz's Trailer Store Precinct One.
Yes, gentlemen, this is the belly dumps we leave from precinct, from Braz's Trailers. Y'all know, uh, precinct three, Commissioner Pearson negotiated a deal a long time ago. We practically get a steal on these trailers. And it's due up for a three-month extension till the new trailers come in. So I asked the court to approve signing these leases.
All right, motion been made, is there a second? All right, further discussion?
Yes, sir, it's, it's not three, three months, it's three trailers, three months.
I'm just reading what's written.
I know, that's why.
Thirty-three month lease. It's that, no. All right. Let me try to, it's three months.
Not for nine a month, for three months, for three trailers.
I apologize in how I use my forensics to separate that.
All right, all's in favor, say aye. Oppose, like sign, motion passes. Item number sixteen, discuss to approve the county judge to sign a contract with Lone Star Security Services for alarm systems in VanZant County, ready or blind, in Will's Point.
Oh, my goodness.
Okay, wait, we got, we got to make, uh, there's gotta be, we got to amend it to make it twelve months. They put on there thirty-six months and we only have a facility for twelve months. So we don't want to sign an agreement for thirty-six months. So is there, is there a motion to, uh, sign an agreement with the adjustment to twelve months, please?
That's my call.
All right, I'll say, all right, any further discussion? All's in favor, say aye. Oppose, like sign, motion passes. Item number seventeen, discuss consider approving resolution to apply for Senate Bill Twenty-Two grant. This is, is just kind of a cleanup act. We, we technically approved it when we put it in the, our budget fiscal year twenty-four budget because we got the money shown coming in. But we don't have anything in the commissioner's court that says we, we want to approve the application for that. And I put in here something that relatively, uh, short and easy that says, therefore, the last sentence is therefore, the VanZant County Commissioners Board approves submission of the grantification acceptance of other funds should they be awarded regarding Senate Bill Twenty-Two. And so, and Senate Bill Twenty-Two, there's multiple categories. There's the sheriff's award, a grant, which is, uh, five hundred thousand dollars. There's the VA's grant, which is two hundred and fifty thousand. And there's a constable one that we apply for, but probably don't, uh, qualify for. So is there a motion to approve the resolution? Motion. All right, uh, Commissioner Barton, is there a second? Uh, commission, discussion?
This is, uh, this is for the twenty point four, huh?
Right.
I didn't know if that was in your resolution or not. Or this resolution was gonna go out and go, and you said it's gonna come down to only twenty-five dollars. Were there any sort of grants for twenty-four, twenty-five?
Yes, I wonder.
One year or two years? She's saying two years, you're saying two.
They approved it for two years, but we gotta reapply the second year?
Yeah, I believe we have to reapply.
So will this work for the second year reapply? Cause that's kind of all coming together with budget aid.
Yeah, well, uh, well, we.
That's my question, is this, just covering both of grants, both of years, or just covering just the first point?
You want me to amend it to say for fiscal, through fiscal year twenty twenty-five?
That'd be great, I think, because we're gonna bring in for both years.
Uh, and I'll put that in, I will modify that, say, this award grant regarding Senate Bill, let me choose for this, our fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five.
Sure.
I mostly give these. Okay. So motion been made, is there a second? I mean, uh, all's in favor, say aye. Oppose, like sign, motion passes. All right, that, uh, we will now, the commissioners will now go in, I will now go into our closing executive session. In fact, section slide five one point zero seven four, both Texas government coaches will deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer employee. Or item two, to hear complaints or charge against an officer, welcome forward. So, and we are going into this session at, uh, ten twelve.
Judge?
Yes.